X, Y, Z. My name is Adelaide Brest. I am doing a mic check. Mic check, mic check. Want to make sure everything sounds good. Mic check, mic check. I know it's a bit hard. I'm pretty sure the room is circular, right? Which I know screws with the acoustic, but it's all right. Talking. Hopefully this is not enough. I am not...
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you call the rule?
Yes, Mayor. For the present for the City Council Successor-
Agency and Housing Authority.
All right. Any persons wishing to phone in for public comment may dial 888-251-2949, or 215-861-0694. The access code for June 29th is 473-1505-POUND. And then wait two seconds and press POUND again. Operator, are there any callers on the line? Operator going twice. Oh, okay. Apparently the phone is disconnected. We'll wait for a moment for them to dial again. So I'll tell you what. We'll move on with the meeting, and then at the point that we're notified that the phone line is up, we'll entertain public comment again. So Madam Clerk, you call the rule?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then Item 1, CSA 1 and H1?
Warrant register.
Move aloud, Pevens.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
City Council members, successor agency members, and housing authority members, Dotson-
Aye.
Padilla-
Aye.
Morales-
Aye.
Falk-
Aye.
Mayor Chairman Butts.
Aye.
Mayor, I just got notified that the line is now open.
Okay, are there any callers, operator?
Mr. Mayor, we do have several callers.
Go ahead. It sounds like we have one caller.
If you wish to make a public comment, please press POUND 2 on your telephone keypad. That's POUND 2. First caller, your line is now unmuted. Please go ahead.
Is this my line?
Yes, ma'am. Your line is now unmuted.
Okay, first of all, you guys, we couldn't hear anything that was said whatsoever. So again, you guys are playing games with the audience for us as residents. You can't be hurt. You can't hear anything that's going on. So there's a lot of confusion. You do this on purpose every single week. Now, regarding items, I see that you guys have snuck in a late, last-minute meeting at 5:30 PM, which was posted at 6:06 PM. Brown violation. Then, also, your warrant registers. You keep on transferring amounts to the general liability bank account. We have no idea why. Again, you have not answered the question, but why there's $20,000 every month now for the in-custody non-emergency medical treatment. The one before you had like 1,200 a month. Also, there's been no response regarding the tree trimming. They're getting $100,000 a month now at West Coast Arborus, and we're not seeing the trees being trimmed properly, et cetera. Also, the outfitting of the police vehicles and where the funds are coming from, general funds listed for the Public Works Department, $20,000. Then the pilot shuttle service. Then, we have things that are going to be discussed in a future meeting, but they're being paid on this warrant register. You guys are violating, let's see, number three. The annual Parks, Rogers, Parks, Rogers Parks bathroom, $635,000. And you guys are giving them some more money for stuff that you guys didn't need to have done before. It's poor planning. Also regarding the traffic signal, safety improvement. There's open trenches that are not secured all the time. That's number six. Number five, the asphalt company. I've been asking since at least Padilla was elected, when our streets are going to be done. There's been no response. You're clearly ignoring one of the oldest sections, Fairview Heights, up in Inglewood, and the street sidewalks and safety and ADA. There's Title 2 and Title 6 violations. Still, there's no mobility, and there's a massive pothole. We also have not been invited or noticed on any of these outreach meetings that you say that there are large groups of stakeholders and citizens, so large groups of stakeholders and citizens were excluded. And as you know, I have been ignored in Stonewall for almost 12 years now. There's been little information or responsiveness. Apparently, currently blessings of the apparent directors of DePulver, Bud, Padilla, and Fields and Atwell. Let's see. We're hoping that we're going to be having shade trees, because you guys are removing a lot of trees, and for this street redoing and the light stuff. And I'm seeing there's new palms that have been put in, and I haven't received a response yet regarding what trees are being replaced. There's just way too much on-
Thank you, caller. You're at time. Operator, next caller, please.
Next caller, your line is now unmuted. Please go ahead.
Gil Matthew, just shake four. Mayor and City Council, can you hear me?
We can hear you perfectly well, Gil.
Oh, very good. Good afternoon, Mayor Budson, City Council. On item number three, on the restroom, we've had problems before with what these prices- Because the money you're spending for a restaurant, we had the same problem at Dixon Park. But anyway, on the capital improvement project, on the Project 619 and 672, it's good to see that you finally understand combining the projects together. It's less expensive than putting them separate. That's the project on Centinela all the way to Florence. Now, one of the things, they're supposed to start in August and then complete it in the fall. That's gonna be a pretty hard thing to do, because there's gonna be a lot of traffic with the football stadium and the other items that's gonna cause a flow of traffic down Centinela and Florence to the stadium. But anyway, I'm sure you worked it out. And also, on the order of the funds that come in, grants funds for the police and so forth, the project should be given to the police for cameras. And whatever can be transferred, an update on the police. And overall, we in pretty good shape if we have some leadership on this council and understand that you are the council of Inglewood, you're not the council of SoFi or the Clippers, and give some more attention to the residents of Inglewood. And also, there's other, a whole lot of things that we can do for the future of Inglewood. We're gonna be okay. And then also, the other thing too is, they're gonna need elections. Election coming in November. And I don't know why you guys so haven't get an election schedule. And of course, I'm not gonna vote for any of you. But anyway, that should be up to the residents. But we're gonna clean house. And residents, this is the time. Vote, vote, vote. It's no time for talking. Talking is over. It's time for action. And the residents of Inglewood will speak loud and clear, I can guarantee you. But right now, you don't hear them, because they don't have no way of talking to you guys. I'm glad to see you taking off the face mask.
Okay, operator, next caller, please. Operator. Operator. Okay, we'll take that that was the last caller. PH1?
Public hearing to receive public comments regarding the city's 2020 urban water management plan.
It will continue to the council meeting of July 20th, 2021. Item 2?
Approval of the minutes of the meeting held on January 19th, 2021.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members, Dotson, Padilla, Morales, Falk, Mayor Butts.
Aye. The consent calendar. Items 3 through 7.
Some move. Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members, Dotson-
Aye.
Padilla-
Aye.
Morales-
Aye.
Falk-
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. DR1 and H2.
Staff report presenting the fiscal year 2019 through 2020 financial statements and single audit for the City of Inglewood and the City of Inglewood Housing Authority financial statements, excuse me.
Will receive and file. A1?
Thank you, Mayor. There's no reports from the City Attorney's Office.
CM1?
Thank you, Mayor. There are no reports from the City Manager's Office.
CC1?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. First, I would like to thank Ms. Randall Curtis and Jason Witt of the Hollywood Park for their outstanding service this past weekend, this past Saturday. They provided excellent service to our city, to the residents, and to the vendors that attended the summer bash. I would like to also thank the residents that stopped by the city clerk's table. My team and I were so delighted to meet so many residents, update voter registration cards, and give out information regarding our city. If you missed the event, feel free to check out highlights from Saturday on my City Clerk's page. I would like to add also, Mayor, that I just couldn't do anything that happened on Saturday without my wonderful team, and I wanted to give them a special thank you as well. Also, my deputy Angela Allen, she would like to extend her heartfelt thank yous to the City Council, to the mayor, Ms. Kathy Ayers, for the condolences, for the condolences, and all of the love and gratitude for the loss of her sister, Ms. Arlene Parks. And then lastly, I would like to wish everyone a safe and happy Fourth of July. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I also want to note that they were color coordinated to the event.
And they took one picture with glasses.
Vow glasses. Okay. Now, Luciana, were you prepared to talk a little bit about the audit?
Yeah, we were gonna talk about the audit.
Well, I'd like you to hear, come in here, how well we did. Come on.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. My name's Luisana Gomez. I'm the accounting manager. We are here to present to you the city's financial statements and our single audit report. Here to present today is Brian Gruber. He's the managing partner of LSL, our independent audit firm, and also the lead partner on our engagement. I wanted to just quickly acknowledge also the efforts from all the departments, especially the accounting team, who've worked really hard to get our audits done timely and correctly. And Brian, we'll take it from here.
Great. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Brian Gruber with LSL CPAs, the independent auditor for the City of Inglewood for your year-ended financial statement September 30th, 2020. We have completed our audit and provided it to you today. We, the purpose of an audit is the expression of an opinion on the financial statements, and we express an opinion which is referred to as an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which is what you would look to achieve in a financial statement audit. Along with the audit is your audit of your federal programs, your single audit is what it's referred to as. And you actually had no federal compliance findings, which is a success for the city for your federal programs this year. In addition to that, there was two auditor communication letters. One on your internal controls. We provided no comments on related to any deficiencies, what are deemed to be material weaknesses. So that's positive for the city. And we did provide one comment related to controls, related to one of your software's systems to improve controls. Overall, positive results for this year's audit. So, thank you. I'm available if you have any questions. Thank you.
All right. How about the findings?
So the findings, what I mentioned is, yeah, positive results this year.
I just wanted to hear you say it again.
I was gonna ask you, because the last time we had specific findings, and just the numbers, we had like, I don't know, we were in the teens last time, and now we have already one, right? So that, just that, is a really good job, and thank you to staff, everyone.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And again, we receive and file a report. And we've had CC1? CSA 2?
Approval of the minutes of the meeting held on-
January 19th, 2021.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Successor agency members, Dotson-
Aye.
Padilla-
Aye.
Morales-
Aye.
Falk-
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye. We'll adjourn the Inglewood Successor Agency. H3?
Approval of the minutes of the meeting held on January 19th, 2021.
Local approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Housing authority members, Dotson-
Aye.
Padilla-
Aye.
Morales-
Aye.
Falk-
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye. We'll adjourn the Housing Authority. Under appointments, I move to appoint Councilwoman Dionne Falk to the California City's Gaming Authority, JPA, as our City Council representative. This role was previously held by retired Councilmember Franklin.
So I second the motion.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members, Dotson-
Aye.
Padilla-
Aye.
Morales-
Aye.
Falk-
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. Now we're to public comment. Any persons wishing to address the council on any matter connected with city business not elsewhere considered may do so at this time for one minute. Operator, are there any callers?
We do have several callers. Once again, if you wish to make a public comment, please pass POUND 2 on your telephone keypad. First caller, your line is now unmuted. Please go ahead.
There's still ongoing continued Brown Act violations. We have not been able to hear the majority of this meeting on our phones. We only heard here when we're told we can speak. We're paying a lot of money to AT&amp;T and the IDT Department on this warrant register alone. Regarding the drones and females stalked in their backyards, the city still has had no response. Regarding Inglewood Memorial vandalism, where's the police report and the other information? Was it really vandalism, guys? Vandalism? And if you're patting yourself on your back for the SoFi event, great that you pulled it off. As you said, you did not publish it well, and so many people didn't know about it. Some were able to enjoy it. I do believe that you're making the experience enjoyable for everyone, and you again ignored the elderly and for the disabled. This is an ongoing problem. You guys have not returned my phone calls, my emails. You are not setting meetings. This is going all throughout your administration, and you're allowing me to be victimized and revictimized, and forbidding me from filing claims, et cetera, and meaning to do my city business and even enter City Hall, and it's your guys' fault, not me. Stop victimizing. Start returning the phone calls and the messages and the emails that you requested from me, and take care of the things that I'm paying for. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Operator, any other further call?
Next caller, your line is now unmuted. Please go ahead. All your lines currently unmuted. Please go ahead.
Is that me?
Of course it's you, Gil.
Okay, good. Having trouble with the telephone. Anyway, we can improve this telephone situation somewhere or another, and maybe perhaps you can open up room community aid and have people speak from there. But anyway, several things, and this is for all members, for your comments. One, comment on the field center update. Number two is comment on the 9000 new list of housing. And I was shocked to understand that we got 4,000 people on the waiting list for housing. Also, comment on the contract with Psycho about assigning that traffic comment, I mean, assign it to, a lot of things on the agenda, not on the agenda, but this should be discussed. Now, this is all me. Also, the election schedule. When are we gonna have election schedule for November? That's what freaks me out. And please, all members, each one of you have 20% vote. And Ms. Falk, now you're on there a little while now. You're representing District 4. I have not received any news letter that you're talking about, and you know a lot about the school board that's been in receivership for seven years, and you sat on the school board, you were not able to do anything to get it out of this receivership.
Okay, operator, we've given him more than enough time. Is there any other callers?
There's one more caller, Mr. Mayor. Next caller, your line is now unmuted. Please go ahead. The caller is disconnected from the call. There are no further callers at this time.
Okay, so we've had our two callers, and now we're gonna move on to the mayor and council remarks. Councilman Dotson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Wait, wait, see, I got shocked. See, I looked over where Ken is sitting, and it freaked me out for a minute. All right.
You should have just moved your lips.
All right. All right. Go ahead, Councilman Dotson.
Not good?
Yes.
Again, I want to run everyone that the only legal fireworks in the city of Inglewood are safe and sane. And you can report illegal fireworks to Police Department by calling. Their non-emergency line, 310-412-8771. Remember, remember, there's a $500 fine if you are cited. Remember, remember, there's a five hundred dollar fine if you are cited for possession of illegal fireworks. Movies in the park. On July seventeenth and the thirty-first, our parking wreck department will have drive-in movies in the park. It will take place at Ed Vincewood Park in the parking lot of Champion Field. There will be a fifteen dollar cost per vehicle. For more information, go to the city website or call three one oh, four one two, eight 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 zero. City shredding day. The city will have a shredding day on August fourteenth, nine AM to one, in front of Inglewood High School, for Inglewood residents only. If you can't make the August date, I will have an annual District One shredding day on Saturday, September the eighteenth. I hope everyone will have a safe, happy Fourth of July. With that, see you in two weeks.
All right, Councilman Padilla, District Two.
Great, thank you, Mayor. You know, I just want to acknowledge, you know, last week, I had an opportunity to visit one of our local District Two residents, a Vietnam War veteran, you know, a true hero, Mr. Lee Robinson. Lee has lived in Inglewood for many, many years, and we teamed up with American veterans, their President Ray Delgado, who is also a Inglewood resident here in District Two. And we were able to present Mr. Robinson with this, you can see a picture up there, beautiful electric scooter to help him get around. And these are the type of actions of gratitude for our veterans that we take here in the city, and that I want, and that American vets have been doing so much for community members. So I want to just give a huge thank you to Mr. Ray Delgado for them contributing this electric wheelchair so deservingly to Mr. Lee Robinson. Mayor, I'd also ask that you close today in the memory of retired Culver City Lieutenant and a good friend of ours, Larry Moroso. He is the brother of our Lieutenant Jay Moroso from Santa Monica Police Department. Larry was tragically killed in a motorcycle accident. He had been retired from the Culver City Police Department, and on his way home on his motorcycle last Thursday evening, was involved in a, in his traffic accident. So may his soul rest in eternal peace. That being said, please enjoy this Fourth of July, enjoy being with your family, your friends, your loved ones. Don't do any of that, you know, nonsense, blowing up these big old cannons. I know the urge is gonna be there, especially when everybody brings them out, you know, but try to discourage these type of illegal activities. You know, our police and our fire departments are already busy enough. They don't need to have to respond to, nor do we want to respond to, when kids or family members are injured, because, you know, these are explosives, these are bombs, they're not toys. And so many times, kids and adults are injured and they're in the emergency room, and then we also have a chance of having fires. But also the PTSD, post-traumatic stress disorder, that it causes, not only for those, you know, for us as, you know, humans, but also for our pets. You know, our pets go through a lot through this Fourth of July. So please, enjoy the Fourth of July, let's celebrate for what it is, but do it in a safe manner. With that, enjoy the rest of your week.
Councilman Falk, District Four.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a few announcements. First, for the cat lovers, I want to announce that there is, Los Angeles County is announcing a light up a life, adopt a cat for only seven dollars. So everyone can get a cat for seven dollars, and it starts this week. So for our cat lovers in the city of Inglewood, please contact Los Angeles County Animal Care and get more information on that, or you can feel free to reach out to my office, I can provide that information. And then also, our Rotary Club of Inglewood is having its annual firework fundraiser. They will be selling fireworks, safe and sane fireworks, starting tomorrow. So you can look for their different locations in the city of Inglewood, but they will be legal, safe and sane fireworks. So please support our Rotary Club, and their fundraising funds go to support veterans, homeless, students, vocational scholarships, human trafficking, mental illness, seniors, local food banks and little libraries in the neighborhoods, and I do have a few of those in District Four. So support our Rotary Club and get your fireworks from there, get your legal fireworks from there. And then lastly, I just want to acknowledge that we are closing out Pride Month, and for our folks that are celebrating, I want to let them know that we at District Four are celebrating with them. And there is a declaration that I would like to read. It's the Universal Declaration on Human Rights in celebration of Pride Month twenty twenty-one, and it reads, "All human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights. They are endowed with reason and conscience and should act towards one another in the spirit of brotherhood." So let's celebrate Pride Month and celebrate each other for our differences. And lastly, I do also want to join in and wish everybody a happy Fourth of July. I wish them well, and I hope that they have a safe Fourth of July. I hope we don't have any incidents here in Inglewood, and we have a good time, but we again, keep it safe. So that's all I have, Mayor, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Councilman Morales, District Three.
Thank you. Just to follow up on the Pride Month, I mean, this is the first year I actually hear such attention given, and it's so deserving to give Pride Month that time to celebrate and speak out, and just, it's a different world now, and you know, it's going in the right direction in that regard. Still a lot of work to do. Dionne mentioned some fireworks, and we are all having issues with the illegal fireworks in the neighborhood, which, you know, are not pleasant. You know, like I said last week, hopefully that some, you know, of the enforcement works, but the truth is, everything starts at home. If you know your kids are doing it, you know, stop them. If you know your neighbors are doing it, call them in. I mean, it's just quality of life issue. But at the end of the day, we voted, must have been ten years ago or eleven years ago about whether or not we want to continue to sell safe and sane fireworks. And one of the reasons that it overcame that, that election, and we continue to sell the safe and sane fireworks, is because the nonprofits here in the city of Inglewood benefit from it. So that is the one good thing that I see coming from the fireworks stand. And so that's what we should look for. You know, if you go and you buy, ask them which nonprofit it's for, you'll hear it's, you know, the Morningside High School football team, you'll hear it's the Little League, you'll hear it's the church, it's the kids for this. I think that is a bright side. So the one good thing about fireworks, safe and sane here in the city of Inglewood. Also, I wanted to share that I read a Bloomberg report, and some of my colleagues may have read the same one, about how the impact of the stadium is going to end up giving us fifty percent of our revenue. I don't believe it'll be that high. I'll believe it's going to be impactful, but it got me to think about so many other things that are unsung around the city that are making these big, huge impacts, and, and you know, hopefully they'll get some credit for it as well. But ultimately, I also started to think about all of these massive developments and how our local staff and government has been able to get those things accomplished, get them done. We didn't go out and hire a new city manager, we didn't go out and hire a new executive team. Our team did it, and you know, that speaks volumes for the talent we have in the city of Inglewood that we've had over the years, and hopefully that gets sung out loud too at some point. So with that in mind, happy Fourth of July, and that's all I got, Mayor.
Okay. I want to piggyback on what everybody said about the Fourth of July. It's really just time that we grew up and grew past these cherry bombs and so on and so forth. I would have to tell you in my neighborhood that we have had a lot less cherry bombs, but I do go knock on my neighbor's doors and talk to them, and year after year, it's diminishing. I really believe that if we talk to each other as families, I believe that we would grow past this, because this is just, it's nonsense, and it's disturbing, and it's crazy. So let's just not expect that people are gonna get five hundred dollar tickets because the police aren't gonna be there when somebody fires off a cherry bomb. I was at my mother and father-in-law's house over the weekend, and the next door neighbor, you know, I know that, you know, they fired off a cherry bomb, I wanted to go, but my mother-in-law says, "We have to live with them, don't do that." So I didn't, I didn't go knock on that door. But honestly, we have to be neighbors to each other and let's grow beyond that. And with that, I want to close, well, I want to comment a little bit about what Council Morales said as well. You know, we've been able to do some things in this town, you know, pave a lot of roadways and redo a lot of sidewalks, trim a lot of trees, take out diseased trees. These bathrooms at these parks, they're like little houses. I mean, minimum, you spend is four hundred thousand, I think they said it was six thirty-five for the ones at Rogers. But you know what, they needed to be done, they were an abomination. And now we have parks that are fit for our kids and our residents. And these things don't happen if a city doesn't progress and develop. You can't spend that kind of money to take care of decades of neglected infrastructure. So, you know, we've done what we could to have local hire provisions in these development agreements, we've instituted rent control, we've subsidized low income housing, we have a building coming up at Redondo and West, a hundred and one units, there's gonna be a low income housing, a portion of it low income on the seven hundred block of West Beach. We have more affordable housing and senior housing in whole numbers and per capita than any place in the South Bay. I believe that we've really been a balanced city as we've worked to improve our crime rates and, and you know, and I'll be, I'm proud to say that a lot of residents, they now have generational wealth within their properties that they own. So let's continue to grow together, and let's stop these stupid cherry bombs. And with that, I want to close the meeting in the name of, in case I didn't do it last week, of Martha Estrada, a thirty-six-year employee of the city of Inglewood. She was the first person that I met at the age of nineteen when I came in to apply to be a community service officer. Police department was over at an old doctor's building called the Rawa Building where the Curtis Tucker Health Facility is right now, and just a sweetheart. And she passed a pancreatic cancer a little over a week ago. And I'm gonna close in the name of Lieutenant Larry Moroso, the brother of Jay Moroso of the Santa Monica Police Department. And with that, we adjourn.